To join with us, the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, who liberate and justice for all.
In case of fire, there are two ways that you would exit the chamber doors. To my left, you'd exit through the double doors and take a left, walk down one flight of stairs and outside of the building. Perhaps the best way would be at the rear of the chambers, the double doors, and exit at that point. And in either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Secretary, please take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Baller.
Here.
Peter Falk here. Kathleen Sarnow absent. Lori Longi absent. Nicholas Ficus absent. Charles Latt absent. Ronald Gregory.
Present.
Alan Dranin absent. Dominic Alamo absent.
Ron Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioner. Approval of minutes, which we do not have February 20th, the 6th or the 3rd. So, the chair would be, I guess, in order to leave them on the table. Or, I think the other two are, the April 3rd's wouldn't be.
Which one do we need to table?
The other two were, so April 3rd's would need to be.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to table April 3rd's minutes.
Second.
Would be all of them, I think. Table until, all of them until the next meeting.
Right.
Oh, I thought you said the other two were already on the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I'm sorry. We'll have to take the roll.
What happened?
Well, because the vote now is in by individual call.
Oh, okay.
Just do the ones that are present, save time.
Charles Durin.
For.
Elizabeth Baller.
For.
Peter Falk, for. Ron Gregory.
For.
Okay, that's, I keep trying to remember that, that since we don't have a secretary, we'll go on by tape. Staff report, Assistant Town Planner.
Okay. So, I guess the first thing is, we had a great week of events. Last week, we're all be able to attend the Healthy Enfield event.
I was there.
If you weren't there, you should definitely watch the video. He was a great speaker. He was very dynamic, and it was actually a very fun event, I would say. So, it'd be a good thing to watch if you have a chance. And it is on ETV.
It's very easy to listen to.
Very easy to listen to. And I think we had a lot of really good ideas come out of that meeting. And I'm going to try and draft up my notes, and as I get things together, we'll get everything to the commission in terms of, you know, what would affect commission proceedings and our regulation. They had some really good ideas about incorporating biking and walking as transportation into how we evaluate transportation and how we request developers evaluate their transportation modes and their impact on the road system. Especially when we start looking at projects down in Thompsonville, if there's the anticipation that people will be walking to a particular use, they may not need as much parking, but they may need to demonstrate that somehow.
Well, there was one section that we were going to add to our requirements when they do their survey for traffic.
Right, and he was saying basically, rather than doing just a survey of the traffic, do a survey of multimodal transportation. So, you would do a survey of all, still do the same amount of work on the vehicular traffic, but then also add in those pedestrians and those cyclists and the transit riders as part of your calculations. So, sort of estimate what would the impact be on something like the magic carpet or the train when we get it. So, it was a pretty minor adjustment to what we have in our regulations to make that happen. And then, yesterday morning was the Thompsonville Partners event at 33 North River, and that was also a really well-done event. I believe more than 100 people came, and there's a lot of interest from a wide variety of groups in terms of what's going on in Thompsonville with the Transit Center and more broadly in terms of goals for the year. And then Lori and I were actually staffing the Neighborland tables, and Neighborland is this, it's, I'm not sure if you call it a company or not, if they're a company or if they're a nonprofit, but there's an organization that produces poster boards and an online application where you can collect ideas from the public. So, it's, the poster board, it says, "I want blank in Enfield." So, we were asking people to write down any ideas that they had about what they wanted to see happen and collect some new input from the public. Some really good ideas that came out of it.
That's the way, some of what we did when we were doing the plan.
Yeah, and we had them at the gala, too, in November, and they'll periodically show up at events, because it's a great way to just catch people who happen to be around and ask them to just tell us what their, what their interests are in terms of moving Then a few more things. There's a question from the Shaker Heights subdivision that we'll actually come back to you, so we will ignore that for now. We decided, it'll come back, it's got to go through council first, possibly, so we'll get back to you on that. And then, the last, there's a, in here I have an application for a minor modification at 6 Niblick Road. I think it's minor, they're looking to change their, the layout of their parking versus where the driveway, the truck entrance is. So, when they, they came forward last summer.
Can we do that under?
At the end?
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
That's where we.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that, I apologize.
Where we decided to do it, no, that's okay.
And then, the last thing I have is that Earth Day is Wednesday, and there'll be a great event going on down near the pond, and the fountains will be in. We have, you know.
Four to seven.
Yep, four to seven on Thursday next week. It should be a really great event.
Explain the fountains, because we're on TV, and I don't believe the people in town would know that and the reasons.
Sure, so they're going to be adding aerators to the fountain, or aerators to the pond, and they will, basically, it's sort of shoot up into the air, so it'll look like a fountain. And what it does is, it turns the water and keeps the water flow moving well, so it's a good environment, from the environmental standpoint, and also it'll just look, we hope it'll add a little life and visibility to the pond.
Also, it'll help the fish, and the kids go down there, and fish will adults do, too.
Yeah, exactly.
I imagine it's similar to what's over in front, on South Road.
Yeah, Brooks Brothers.
Right. Well, okay, it's Brooks Brothers now, right.
There's another one down, too, back on Phoenix, towards Hazard Avenue.
Okay.
Control Module, I think it is. They have one in their pond.
Yeah, so I think there's going to be a couple of them, and they're going to be going in next week, or hopefully next week.
One at the Hampton Inn, too.
I'm sorry?
I think there's one at the Hampton Inn, too.
Right, right.
Exactly, so it'll be great for the fish. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point in the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who's present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that's already elsewhere on this agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time? Please come forward, and again, state your name and address.
Hello. I'm Maureen Mullins, 1625 King Street, and I'm here just to give you an update on what I found out about the Kreck project. I've been here many times, and most recently been to the Zoning Board of Appeal for their You're probably aware that the cease and desist order was upheld at that Zoning Board of Appeal meeting on the 31st, and it was four to one. Kreck could continue to work on the school and site work that was approved by this commission back in October of 2011. They had a choice at that point, were they going to return here to PNC, or they're going to go to court, what was going to happen. On Friday last week, it was April 11th, I had arranged to have a meeting with Dr. Douglas of Kreck, he's the man who's in charge of everything there, and I met with him and my brother. The reason that I wanted the meeting, I had met him at the Legislative Office Building when I was there for another hearing, and I said, "Could we just sit down and talk, you know, maybe have lunch, have coffee, just sit down, because there's some things I'd feel more comfortable about just talking over?" So, I had a call, and we couldn't arrange it before the Board of Appeal meeting, but we did make it for last Friday, so that's the reason that we got together, was my initiation. I wanted to know when the site work would begin and what the next steps would be in the project. You know, I'm concerned about the drainage, many of you may remember about the water being over the road, and some of my neighbors, and there's still water up there in the north section even more than before, because the drains are higher than it used to be. I had explained the whole situation to Dr. Douglas about the Conservation Service coming in in the late 40s, early 50s, and putting in the four horizontal ditches, the interconnections, the pipes under the road, so that he would know that this is something that wasn't just done, it was really done the right way. And that has been replaced by these two raised drains that just don't seem to be doing what the old ditches used to do. When Dr. Douglas and Kreck Chief Operating Officer Sandra Cruz Sorano met with us, Dr. Douglas explained that Kreck preferred to go through the planning and zoning process, and they had sent a letter to the town about a week and a half earlier via the town attorney, and they were requesting a reply by this past Monday, the 14th. Or, if they didn't have the reply about going to planning and zoning, they would be going to Superior Court. Their concern would be to complete the site work in time to prepare the school for occupancy in August of this coming summer. We also spoke of the other site issues regarding drainage and especially the berm or earthwork mound, which begins next to my home. It's approximately 250 feet long, 22 feet high in the front section, and that's within 50 feet of my house, and 34 feet at the section near the school. Dr. Douglas had explained that there had been money for removal of the contaminated soil that was already budgeted, but they didn't have to remove it because there were other options. They found that the soil wasn't as contaminated as they thought, which I had already told them, because that was our fire before. So, our question was, where did the money go? If there was money already approved, wouldn't it still be there to, to move the berm as it is there? Neither my brother nor I had heard about the letter that Dr. Douglas was speaking about. We told Dr. Douglas that we would be going from the meeting there to see our town manager, because if we could do anything to expedite the process, to get things moving along, we certainly wanted to do whatever we could to encourage and not run into a problem where we're running out of time and we can't get everything done, and the kids are out there, what are they going to do, and more expense? So, we did come to the town manager, he was in a meeting, he left the meeting to hear of our concerns. He said he had not received this letter or information, but would try to reach the town attorney. I went to the planning and zoning staff to see if they knew of the letter, and by chance I saw Rachel in the hallway. She was going down the hall to another office and then coming back, so I'd mentioned it to her, and I think she was the one who said, you know, about Tracy, I was planning to see Tracy Beasley, too, to let her know, you know, what we had heard, wondering what's going on here. Tracy said that she hadn't heard the information either. I returned home and I called Kreck, left messages for both Dr. Douglas and Ms. Sorano on Monday, April 14th. Ms. Sorano called to say that she received the message on 4/11, that was when I had left it, and passed it on to the Kreck's attorney. On April 15th, I left a message stating I was trying to contact the staff here, and later that afternoon, a neighbor saw me out there trying to clean the stuff out of the ditch that had come from the wind-blown trash container, and he said that he had a call, he wasn't sure of the name, he thought it was Rachel, I'm not sure, that he had heard that they were going to court. So, I was away the next day, I didn't get a chance to call, it was after 5:00 that day, so I couldn't check out anymore. But, last night I was looking at the paper, the JI, that I'd gotten from a neighbor to look up an obituary, and under legal notices, I see that Kreck has already filed, and there was a notice in the JI on Tuesday, April 15th. So, they must have had it in the works, if they had it in the paper that soon. You know, it still all leaves me with questions, what's going on, who knows what, I don't know much of anything other than what I hear from people, but I'm still concerned about what is happening and what maybe has happened in the past, because I don't think that I've gotten all of the answers. Oh, today, when I tried to reach the town manager or our planning and zoning staff, I left messages because no one was available, there were meetings and other things going on. But Mia did ask if I had any specific questions, I said, "Yes," I wondered if they knew anything about the court date, and was there anything else that I should know? And she said, "At this point, it's a legal matter." She didn't know about the date for the court, she'd gotten back to me after checking, but just to update, I still have lots of questions, we still have the water, we still have the berm. It doesn't look like it's going to come back to PNC, but, you know, with this situation, who knows what's going to happen?
I think that's about it, because, again, they do not tell us, because it may come back here, and if it does, they don't want us to be, well, have an opinion or bias, or...
Biased.
So, we try to stay as neutral as we possibly can.
I still have the new swale or ditch that runs along the property to the east, and that's raised up now, so that part is higher than mine is. And along the north side of the property, there's a swale, there's water coming down, they have hay bales in different places, they have, I don't know what you call these rolls of grass and whatever to stop things. They still have the big pool of water with the big drain raised up. It's really a mess. They have straw mats to keep the water from going out any further into the road, but we still have problems. So, I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
At this point, it's with the lawyers, it's, yeah.
I guess they, there is no timetable usually, because they file all their paperwork in between times, and I don't know the court procedures, so I can't tell you where it's at, except, I guess, the attorneys on both sides.
Right, that's, yeah, it's the attorneys who would know.
I'm just hoping the problems get resolved and aren't overlooked. And I know you can't do anything about that, but at least I can pass on my concern.
That's the problem, the president, yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone else to address the commission at this time? Last call to address the commission. Hearing done, we'll move forward to correspondence. You have the normal Kreck referrals. Again, you see, it's down here, I'm sorry?
Crog.
Yeah, capital region, but referrals to Crog. That's what the towns are up to, and again, it's interesting, and I don't know the reason for Windsor, they're talking about temporary changing regulations for use of structures for temporary occupancy. That's...
It's an interesting one.
Yeah, I just was curious, is that something that's necessary by zoning regulations, or... I wonder why they would do it, I don't know.
I can look into that, it's an interesting one, to see what, what their reasoning is.
I, that's all the only thing. And the other, Windsor was also a regulation pertaining to raising of livestock, and livestock, to me, is like horses and cows, you know, pigs and that, not chickens, but, so they're into a little bit further, I guess. Okay, I think the next is something Rachel put together, and this is from the workshop.
Yeah, this is what Mark Fenton actually passed out at our morning meeting, that Charlie and I both attended this, the morning after the big public event, there was a small, a meeting with staff from, staff and commissioners from Enfield and then some of the other towns in the north central District Health area, and these were the notes he put together from the first meeting.
Yeah.
And that these are...
The first meeting, as you remember, I guess Ron was there, they broke down into six or seven groups, and they were assigned to think of, like, he has short-term, long-term, and what you might think was way far out or wacky ideas, and these are, then he goes, then he broke down what each group had, that basically is what they're... And you'll see that some of them are things that we've discussed and have asked about, and haven't been able to move forward for one reason or another, but they're, they're good to follow, it may be something to look at and come up with.
It'd be great if we could get a rotary at the high school.
Yeah, I know. Well, we hadn't thought of it when we talked of it, and I don't know, the reaction, it seemed, I guess, there wasn't too much talk at that, but it seems that, from what I gathered, that they have been talking about, I guess, is it the state hasn't said no to a traffic light, so I guess that's out.
Yeah, the state came, the state came back with a no on the traffic light. So, now it's, you know, we can, it's to look at what are our alternatives and try and talk to them about, you know, what's their reasoning for the no, the flat-out no.
Because, I mean, the reason is, as I said before, we tried, and it's not on our shoulders for the kid, the first kid that gets hit out there.
But it seemed at the meeting, when it was first brought up with the, at the big meeting, there was only 30, 40 people there?
Yes, yeah.
And no one shouted, no one came out with a very strong reaction against the idea of the rotary. So, it's a really interesting idea, it's, I mean, it's definitely something that's new.
And it's not the old-style rotary that you can't drive over, because they're sloped, I guess, so that even your trucks can go, cut, make the sharp turns and so forth.
Yeah, it was a one-lane rotary, too, it was not, he was saying, you know, don't think that this is going to be something that you would, this is a, that all rotaries are built the same, that you'd get stuck forever and ever, but that with the one-way rotary, it was sort of like, almost as if you had a four-way stop and took out the stop and just slowed everybody down a little bit. That's one, so one lane, but the, again, I was, you could bring those buses and the trucks around.
Superintendent was there, and I guess, he seems to think there should be some kind of traffic control out there, it seemed to be from what was said, and that most of the people there did, too, then.
Right.
So, anyway, that's, that was carried over, so I guess, it's interesting, if you, might be something to save and something we could work on and see what we can do. Okay, no bond releases, or, well, any other correspondence, commissioners' correspondence, anything?
No.
So, that's why I moved on, we don't have a full group. New public hearings, we have none, old business, we have none, new business. Site Plan 1616. It's, if the applicant's are here, they can move forward, and I'll read what it is, and site, the cameras will pick up from the easel over here, and just, if you haven't been here before, you will be broadcast out over ETV. So, you do have people in the town that are watching. Site Plan Review 1616 is a modification to replace a facade of the existing building located at an unnumbered address on Elm Street in a business local BL district and the Hazerville Design Overlay District. Map 83, Lot 138, Rockville Bank is the applicant and the owner. Gentlemen, if you, again, will introduce yourselves and give your name and address and make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Attorney Leonard Jacobs, 146 Main Street, Mea, Chester, Connecticut. I'm representing Rockville Bank. Ron Riley is our architect, and Ron will be basically making the presentation. We're dealing with a, a branch of Rockville Bank which is located, as you can see from our map, it's bounded, or touches on North Street, Elm Street, and Hazard Avenue.
I was going to say, do we have to declare this? I have an HSA account.
It's there, and it's in the, it's in the Hazerville District of town. It's a relatively small bank building, but it is an important branch to Rockville Bank, it is busy, and it's important to the neighborhood that services it. I wanted just to tell you that the property's bounded, as I said, northerly by North Street, and across North Street is a cemetery.
So, really, Hazardville.
On this side of the building is a residential, and the, I guess I would say, the south side is a dental office, and then across the street is, look, it's an open, it's an open space area, seems to be there might be a ball field in there as you walk down, but no buildings across on the other side of the street. So, we have the cemetery on one side, the open field across, the dental office, and we do have one residence on the south. And as you evaluate the proposal, I do want to tell you that we're making no changes to the size of the building, we're not making any changes to the parking or the grounds of the property, we're dealing just with the building itself and the improvements that we want to make to the building that Ron's going to describe to you. And we're here tonight because we need site, we need site plan approval for the changes that we're asking for, and we have submitted for the record an elevation showing the four sides of the building, and what we're going to do is, we're going to have Ron describe to you the changes that we'd like to make, show you the materials that we're going to use. We have a couple of new things, relatively small, that Ron also wants to incorporate into the ideas that we're going to show you, and then at the end, we're hoping you'll agree that these are good changes and site plan changes that hopefully you'll be able to approve. So, I want to turn this over to Ron and let Ron tell you everything.
Great.
Oh, you don't have the, oh, yeah, okay. You have to really hold it rightly directly in front of...
Okay, you're right. Good evening, thank you again for allowing us to present to you this evening. As Len said, we're not really affecting the site of the property, the parking, or anything else. There are a couple cosmetic changes we'd like to make to the building, just as, by way of background, we are doing a significant, almost a gut renovation of the branch itself, partly because we're adding new technologies, we want the building more efficient, and essentially, it's in need of a significant facelift, as you can imagine, as you've seen. And I do have photos of the building, too, if you want to review those as we go, but I'll just walk you through what we've, we're proposing for changes and materials that we're suggesting, and there are a couple things that have occurred during the design process, through our engineering and everything else, and there's a couple things that are, we would like to change on the facade that were not part of our original submission, and I'll walk you through those, they're somewhat minor, there's one that's significant, and they can stay if need be, but I'll walk you through what we're doing. Essentially, the window locations are all staying, the windows are all remaining in place, with the exception of the entry. The entry itself is changing for two reasons, the most significant being the need to meet the Americans with Disabilities Act requirements for accessibility. The reason for that is, we have two doors in a series walking into the vestibule that don't, they enter onto each other, they're both swinging directions opposite each other. Typically, you need seven feet clear in a doors in series, so what we've done is, we've offset the door to the left, walking in, and then you hit the door on the right as you get in. So, what we submitted to you was the door remaining in the same location, and as we've looked at it and trying to make this work, and having the door swing out onto that ramp, we'd rather have it swing in the way it does now, where we've just relocated it to the next location over. So, we're swapping the two doors and windows themselves, which I'll get into, but essentially, the building itself is going to remain as it is, but we're going to re-clad the entire building to make it look more attractive. All the individual pilasters that are now will be removed, the white brick that's there now that's painted in significant disrepair in some locations will be covered, the existing siding that's up in the gables themselves that are now peeling and in disrepair as well will be removed and re-clad in a new material, which we're proposing, is a cementitious lap siding by James Hardy, which is a pretty typical siding that's being used now. Part of the reason for that is, we're replicating a traditional clapboard look with a material that will last for up to 50 years. So, what we'd like to do is make the building as maintenance-free as possible and avoid the problems we're having today that you now can see as you drive through there. The roof itself, we're just re-roofing, we're not making any changes to the roof itself. We are adding a architectural-grade shingle, a 35-year shingle, that I do have samples of here, as well as the two Hardy... a thirty-five-year shingle, that I do have samples of here, as well as the two Hardy materials.
If you would, because-
Sure, absolutely.
You know, yes, but also, maybe you aren't used to our procedure.
Sure.
Because you are on camera, and what you're doing is blocking your, your shot.
Yeah.
Okay, I did it. You're blocking the shot of the, of the camera to pick up your design. And I'd like the people out, and the community to see it. Yeah, there, there you go.
So essentially, what we're doing, as I said, we're leaving the building intact, almost entirely as it is now, with really cosmetic changes to really dress up the look of the building. And to bring it more in line with what's existing in the Hazerville District, which are typical clapboard, lap siding, typical trim details, many board-and-batten details, as I've noticed along the street on some of the craftsman-style buildings. We are adding a canopy over the front door as a weather protection, because right now, as you walk out, there's no coverage over that door at all. And that's really more of a convenience item for clients coming in the door. The drive-up canopy itself, we're just going to clean up and re-clad as well, and paint and repair, because that's in a significant state of weathering, if you will. The material palette, as I said, is all going to be, almost exclusively, the cementitious siding that Len's holding up.
Okay, if you can put that in front there, I guess, or-
Hold that, that's very heavy. So what we've got is, on the trim, you see at the corners, along the battens, on the vertical battens, on the water table detail, and around the windows, will all be their typical standard trim details. And then all the lap siding will be their typical Color Three technology. So it's all white, which is a color that is there currently, and that's a color that we use on all the Rockville Banks as a prototype throughout their network-
Right.
-going forward. And then the color is a colonial slate, which, again, I think is in keeping with the neighborhood, and also something that we use on their prototype throughout their network as well. So we're trying to bring some brand consistency as well to all the buildings we're doing for them.
That's good.
There are a couple things that I want to point out, that, like I said, through our engineering and due diligence, we currently have, and the reason I'll explain is because there's a-
Thank you.
-there's a chimney currently existing today. It's painted white brick. We are going to switch from oil-fired furnace to natural gas, which is available on the site, which will help us create great efficiencies in the systems. So there's no need for us to have the chimneys. So what we like to do is just remove it, clean that area up, and then side right by it, and really clean up that facade. So what we'd request is that we, you allow us to take the chimney down. It can stay, it would just be abandoned in place and repaired and painted if not. The other change relative to the HVAC system is the desire for us to do an intake louver on the front in the gable, which we'll do and trim out, the same way the windows are. And then an exhaust fan at the rear of the building, in the same way, trimmed out, again, in the same way our windows are. And as I mentioned, the doors have just been reversed, where we've got a door currently going in on the right-hand side of the opening. We're going to move it to the left, and then swap that out with windows in the same style and the same materials. And that really is more in reference to code requirements than anything. So that actually covers most or all of what we're doing to the facade of the building. If you have any questions.
How do you vent the gas furnace?
Those will be a direct vent out the rear, where the, we've got equipment going up in the attic space, and then there are some condensing units out the rear, which we also will be putting a new fence around. There's a chain-link fence that's in bad repair. We'll actually add a vinyl fence there to screen those from public view. So that'll be a lot more attractive as you come around from the drive-up and as you drive by from the cemetery side of the building. So we'll be completely covering those new units.
So those units are out there presently?
They are presently there. They're just, they're old and will be replaced with brand-new equipment.
And what, you, you have no equipment on the roof. The only thing-
Correct.
-above the roofline is the chimney.
Correct, which we, which we would like to remove if possible. Otherwise, we'll just abandon it in place.
I was just going to ask Rachel, is that up to the fire department, or, this isn't in the historic area, is it? Is it at the beginning of the historic area?
It is, yes. This is right, as you get in, sort of right as you start into Hazerville District.
I don't know where it begins.
I do not have a full map on me. Actually, I might-
I know there was some discussion on it when they were doing the sidewalks. Do you remember, Peter?
No, I don't remember the session with the building. It's the sidewalks all the way to the traffic light.
Yeah.
That is, yes, they do, yeah.
The equipment is behind the building, is that correct?
It is behind the building, yeah. It's on the rear elevation, right here, currently. It's not shown on here for the sake of the clarity of showing the materials, but it is on the rear of the building centered, right in the middle. Just by way of reference, there's the photo of where it currently resides.
North Street.
And what we propose is to remove that fence and do a lower vinyl white fence that'll be far more attractive and block entirely the view of that equipment.
I was wondering if we have.
I never noticed how ugly that is.
Well, I was wondering, a lot of times, we have screening on that outside, like plantings, but you have the drive-through through there, so you really couldn't put any plantings in there. So you're going to screen it with a vinyl and-
Correct, yes.
That's the only thing you could do. They couldn't do any arbor viding or anything.
Yeah, because there's parking along here, too.
So they come in through here?
This is drive-through.
Okay.
Hazard Avenue.
Right. I know they used to have a drive-through over here, and you had to go up and over, like, a ramp?
Yeah.
Way back. Okay. That was the original bank, I guess. I don't know what bank that was.
The handicap ramp is over on this side.
Okay.
It's on the North Street side.
Yeah, there used to be a ramp there.
The one thing you'll notice, too, on the existing photos, is there is currently a small canopy on the cemetery side of the building-
Right.
-which we're removing. That was an abandoned ATM at one point, and there was a canopy there. And we're taking that off to really improve the look of the building as well on the most prominent public side.
Oh, yeah, I see. Okay.
Yeah, here's the-
Yeah, I've got this one here.
Charlie, all these changes he's proposing, how do we actually get that into the plan? So, because it's not listed there now or shown on what we have. Do we have to incorporate it in somewhere in the conditions, all these things he's proposing that weren't originally there?
Yes. If he's asking for permission, for example, for, for the chimney, I would suggest, because I don't know the heating or use of the, it would be up to the fire marshal, I would guess, because it, that chimney would go all the way through the building to, is there a basement?
It currently goes to the basement, and it's a typical oil-fired furnace.
I don't know if it has to be sealed, or I, I don't know the building codes.
Yeah, what we would do is while we, when we submit our permit documents for building, to the building inspector, we would have to go through fire approval, and then all of our systems will go through their relevant approvals, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, as well as fire protection. And at that point, the drawings that we would like to submit for that would not have the chimney, and it would be completely removed and repaired to the point of it never really existing, both cosmetically and mechanically.
Of course, I don't think it'd be reselling, but if the building would change hands, they'd keep the heat, the gas heat, I guess.
Oh, absolutely.
So, okay. I would just put a condition in there that, that we would allow the removal of the chimney. It's not in the historic area, right? So that wouldn't enter?
Well, they are, they are in the Hazerville Design District.
They are? Oh, all right.
It's not a historic district. It is-
Oh, no. That's for us. But I mean, some, from certain areas to certain areas, federal government does consider a historic district. There are different levels, and I don't know the level.
Hazerville is not, not a designated historic district the way the Anfield Street Historic District is.
No, it isn't.
Yeah, in our research, we found that it's a, and Richard, correct me, it's a Design Overlay District, which typically, in my experience, would just mean that you guys, the town itself, in those overlay districts, would have jurisdiction over the items that we're submitting, cosmetically, trim, materials, and so forth.
I, I don't see a problem as long as the-
If they're not going to be using the chimney, why can't they get rid of it?
It would be probably safer as far as drafts or anything else.
Exactly. We would have to waterproof it anymore, cap it, or anything. We would just assume we move it.
They want to have it sealed off, the fire department. I have no idea what they do.
And that is a standard part of the Building Department application processes. The fire marshal's involved. Whenever it's a commercial project, the fire marshal's involved.
Well, if that's not part of the plans that are presented to us, then he's, he's raised it, then we can add that as a condition that we agreed to, to the removal of the chimney, if it's appropriate, or however you word it, if it's authorized by the Building Department and the Fire Department.
Yeah. If it's approved by those departments, then, then if it wasn't-
Right.
-that'd be another story. But presumably, we, when we go to the Building Department, they're going to look at it.
Oh, correct, yes.
They're going to tell us you can do that.
Right.
Or if there was some other reason why we couldn't, they'd tell us we couldn't.
Correct. What we would have to do is submit a demolition plan, which we have in our final permit documents, which shows the chimney being removed, and then the patch and repair in place.
I'm just one, but I don't know if, well, she's already said so, so we only have two more.
And then the conditions-
We're taking chances with the four of us. If you, we always offer you with only four, it takes four. If you'd rather come back for another vote, but that's going to be up to you. But anyway, no, I have, myself have no problem with that, but. Any, any, anything further?
I think the only thing we would request, too, I think, I think just procedurally, would be the addition of the two louvers that we're requesting on the front and rear for a mechanical system and the switch of the doors, which we didn't show you in the original plans.
Okay, let's-
Let me just clarify this. You're changing the door.
Correct.
Moving it left. You're removing the chimney.
Correct.
Replacing the oil furnace with the gas furnace.
Correct.
You're adding louvers on both ends.
Correct, in the gable ends.
The gables.
Correct.
And the, let's see, I'm trying to look for the conditions.
Oh, and the fence. We're replacing one ugly chain-link fence with a new vinyl fence.
Around, yeah, there's a screen-
To screen the mechanical equipment.
Mechanicals.
Is there a height that you've-
We were, we proposed to do probably a forty-two-inch height fence there, just to really cover our equipment entirely from view.
How high is the fence?
Forty-two inches, three foot six. White.
Got to go with the building.
Absolutely.
Yeah, standing out. Where do we put those additions?
I would say those are general.
Okay. By this approval, we approve the removal of the, stated that way.
Okay.
Prior to fourteen and fifteen, so they, they would move down. So, Peter, Peter, did you write those in?
I just have here, the door moved to the left.
Okay, so fourteen-
Chimney removed.
That would be fifteen.
The oil furnace replaced by gas furnace.
Sixteen.
Add louvers on both ends in the gable.
That's seventeen.
And replace a fence around the mechanicals on the east end with a forty-two-inch-high white vinyl fence.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe it's the north end of the building.
So that's, so we're-
Yeah, it's northeast, I guess.
That's fourteen.
Faces the residential end, anyway.
Correct, yes, right.
That's fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So there'll be nineteen, because you're moving present number fourteen and fifteen down to eighteen and nineteen. Is that right, Peter?
It's five. I had five. So it'd be twenty now.
Two, three, oh, twenty. I lost count someplace. Okay, you-
Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, I believe.
Okay. Well, we'll have, the one that's got to have it is Rachel.
Oh.
I don't know if I have the same order as Peter.
Eighteen, five is twenty-three.
Well, see your order, as long as we have them.
Okay.
Go ahead.
By this approval, removal of the chimney is approved. By this approval, addition of the louvers?
At each gable end.
At each gable. End is approved. By this approval, door moved to the left is approved. By this approval, replacement of oil furnace with gas is approved. The gas heating?
Correct.
I don't know if we have-
And by this approval, replacement of chain-link fence with forty-two-inch white vinyl fence is approved.
Correct. And I believe it, is it?
Ron, is it, when Rachel said moving the door to the left, does that mean the windows are moving?
It's, it's a swap, so it'd be windows to replace door.
Yeah, you better put the swap.
Yeah.
Swap of door and window.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, it's an even swap, yeah.
We know it's going to look great, but-
I know.
Might as well look like what we, what gets approved.
And I guess per standard conditions is that you would need to submit the new drawings for stamp and Peter Falk's signature.
Which we can, we're prepared to do right tonight, if that's necessary. We can formally submit them during normal business hours.
Okay.
Whatever works for Rachel.
The chimney is approved. There's at each gable end is approved. Window is approved. So I have fourteen would be the chimney, fifteen would be the louvers, sixteen is the door and the window, seventeen is the oil furnace, and eighteen is the chain-link fence.
That's it.
And you had sixteen, seventeen, eighteen already?
And then, so fourteen becomes nineteen, fifteen becomes twenty.
Right.
Sixteen becomes twenty-one, seventeen becomes twenty-two, and eighteen becomes twenty-three.
Oh, I didn't even see, I didn't even see those on the other side. Okay.
Exchange, yeah.
Yeah. Well, they do. They all move down, yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I don't think so.
I believe that, that covers it.
We'll, we'll leave copies of the, of this with, with you, these that we've shown you.
Okay.
Or we could, or we could leave smaller versions for the file if, if that's more convenient.
Whatever.
Rachel wants.
Rachel, do you have your stamp with you, Rachel?
We do.
Okay, that'll do it.
That's both presented and proposed. So presented is the signed one, then proposed.
And we will need you to attach the official letter once it's prepared.
Can do that, okay.
The final.
Okay.
But I'll submit this to the file as well.
Yep. So we all clear? For any reason, are we done? And I'll close it, or? Any more questions? Any questions for? Okay.
Yeah, he's cutting, right.
But we did add, add some things. We worked on a little bit.
Just a little like that.
I'll close SBI 1616. Chair will entertain a motion. First would be a waiver.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of Section 9.10.2, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second. Motion's made, that's seconded. Any discussion on the waiver? Hearing not all in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, take the roll.
Charles Durren.
Four.
Lizzy Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Ron Gregory.
Four.
There you go, four fours.
Four fours. No abstentions and no noes.
Two puns.
Okay, motion to approve, someone?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Site Plan Review 1616. Site Plan Modification to Replace Facade in Existing Building Located at 231 Hazard Avenue in a Business Local BL District and the Hazerville Design Overlay District, MAP 83, Lot 138. Rockville Bank applicant/owner. And this is contingent upon, what is it, twenty-three conditions. There were eighteen listed in the original motion, and we added, and I don't know if I got the numbers right, but we added five. Door to be moved to the left, which is a swap with the window. The chimneys to be removed, the oil furnace replaced by the gas furnace. We're going to add louvers at both ends in the gable. And the fence around the mechanicals will be replaced with a forty-two-inch-high vinyl white fence.
Sounds like it.
And this is all outlined in a, in a letter from Rachel Platt dated March 28, 2014. That's the motion. Is there a second? There you go.
Motion's made and seconded. Applicant, have any problem with the conditions?
No, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion?
Oh, it's an excellent opportunity to make this building look more attractive than it does now. I appreciate you, you taking and going through the expense of doing it and staying in Anfield.
Well, you're right, absolutely. And it's also, as you come into the village, it's a very prominent spot, really, coming up the road from any direction.
Are you going to change the name?
We don't know that yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Okay.
TBD.
We don't have anything to do with deciding.
They're called-
I know. Okay.
Then let's, uh-
Charles Durn.
Discussion, four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk, four, Ron Gregory.
Four.
There you go, four fours.
It's four, four, no, non-opposed, and no abstentions, motion carries.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much, we do appreciate it.
Be a nice addition out there. Rachel, you don't, you don't need to have them, you don't keep that, the roofing, do you, all that, some I know you do, well, that's an awful thing to store.
I don't think we need it.
I would say, well, we could add the bathroom record, which is the actual specifications of that.
That'll work.
That'll work, absolutely.
It makes it a lot easier for you to monitor that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, site plan review sixteen seventeen, this is site plan review for a reoccurring outdoor special event at an existing building located at thirty-nine Hazet Avenue, a business regional BR district, map fifty-six lot two, Manuel Rubio, 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 applicant Leo BHW Limited LLC owners, and the applicant here, all right, if you, yeah, I didn't see him come up, I was reading, and if you'll have a seat, sir, and identify-
I'll give you a small-
Unless you will, okay, yeah, it's fine.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's in regards to Cinco de Mayo.
Yep.
All right.
Yep. Okay, if you will, tell us what it is you're going to do.
Yes, first of all, thank you for having me this night, and the opportunity to, to explain a little bit more about our biggest day of, of the year, first, you know, in this small presentation, I wanted, you know, to give you a, a brief history of, you know, Cinco de Mayo, it's, it's a celebration of the Mexican army against the French, and actually, it was some help from, from the US, so through the years, this festivity became very, very popular in the, in, in the United States, so, you know, our restaurants, since they're Mexican restaurants, they, every year, it becomes a tradition to, to host an event for, you know, to receive all the people that, that actually likes to, to, you know, to feel the Mexican vibe at least once a year. Okay, the events, well, you know, for the past couple of years, Plaza Esteca, it's been one of the popular restaurants in, not only New England, in Virginia, and, and other four states, and, and every year, as I said, our main festivity is Cinco de Mayo, which is maybe the fifth, we never change, let's say, if it comes, falls on Wednesday, we do the party on Wednesday, if it falls on Tuesday, it doesn't matter, for us, I mean, for all the people who notice on the statistics and the, and the, you know, through the years, they go the same Cinco de Mayo, regardless, the, the day, the, the day, you know, through, thanks to our great success, we created a big celebration, in other locations, since the, the space is, is bigger, we create, we call it festival, but it's not a festival like that, but we call it like that, because we gather families, and, and what we do on each location, we have a specific area for, for kids, you know, if they come with a family, there is a bouncing house, so the kids can, you know, play, and we like to do it outdoors, because it, it's the beginning of the nice weather, so people like to be outside, just hanging out, you know, with their families and friends, and, and also, what we do over there, you know, we put a, a small sound system for, for a DJ, you know, to put the music, we also offer food and, and drinks outside, obviously, all this, it's, it's done based on the requirements on each city, what we do every year, we follow the process to go to zoning, I mean, on each city, to zoning department, to see the requirements, to fire, to see what's the specifications that, that they request, and it's zoning, fire, and health.
Oh, yes.
And health, of course, yes, so, you know, pretty much what we do is, once we get approved from, from them, they, they request certain specifications, in this case, health department told us that we can't cook anything on the outside, we don't usually cook anything, if the, if the health department on the city approves to, to grill, you know, like have a barbecue, like grill the, the steaks, we grill them, and we have like a small, let's say, taco area, so the, the staff prepare the tacos and give it to the customers, they don't touch the food at all, so in this case, health said that not to cook outside, so everything we bring in from the inside.
That was one of the things I saw in the letter, you requested that, and I was gonna say, did you solve the conflict, because I saw the health department said no, so-
Exactly, no, and, and we don't have a problem.
Okay.
I would say it's, it's a little bit less stress for us if, if we're not gonna cook the steak, what we do is, everything we cook outside, we have the containers, you know, the ones that we use for catering, so, I mean, we use the, the, the special equipment and sanitizations that-
I noticed it was the same answer with the, any beverages, they also said no, they had to be prepared inside, and-
Exactly, and what we have as far as beverage is just that, canned, canned sodas and, and beers, and we have the container for the margarita, and, you know, it's just pretty much pouring and, and, and giving it, sorry?
No, I, I had saw, saw that, and whether that had been rectified, because the plans, even the pictures that we have, do show the outside equipment for cooking and storage of-
Oh, yeah, because that, that's the sample that I requested for, uh, we don't use all that, but you know, since they requested a picture, we call the distributor, because they, they supply everything.
Sure.
So the distributors send the picture, and, you know, it has the, like, the demo of what you can put on that, on that portable bar, but, but it's not that we use, we also, we only put the, we have a cooler for the, for the cans, and the container for the margaritas, and, and that's it, and everything is plastic glass.
Now, there was a question, I think, from the fire marshal on the location of the bounce house, that he wanted it away, a certain distance away from the sidewalk, or-
Yes, and actually, uh-
Can you fit that in there?
If you go forward on the, on the distribution map, if you see the number thirty-nine.
Right.
It's on the left, so it's far behind, it's right next, it's right next to the building, that, that square, it's like, pretty much right next to the building, so no parking lot or anything around, it's just grass, actually.
It's a tight fit for you, though.
Uh, well, we actually measure, and it's about eighteen feet, and the bouncing house is six, is, I'm sorry, fifteen square feet, it's, it's the small one, we don't rent that, no, we, we wouldn't even able to, to fit everything in there, yeah, and also, what we do as well, we, we visit the, the police department on each location, and we request to police officers on duty, we, we know, we pay for, for that, just to ensure the, the safety of, of the, of the people that, that visits the, the event, as well, we hire private security company, why, because, you know, we like to, to keep everybody safe, and, and, you know, depending on the, on the size of the location, we hire the certain amount of private security staff, you know, to, to make sure everything goes under control.
Uh, the hours are like five till sundown, which is what, about eight o'clock at that time?
Around eight o'clock, yeah, yeah, because it gets cold, so nobody stays out.
Right.
And what else, also, I, I put a, a sample of pictures on the, of another events, as you can see, the, the type of fence that we use, you know, the families that take pictures, and, and the bouncing houses, so you guys can see, it's on the, on the, on the presentation that I brought, there is a few samples, I mean, a few, yes, a few pictures of it.
Yeah, actually, they're included in our, in the file, too.
Yeah, actually, yeah. In this location, we wouldn't have a dunk tank, but in some locations, we do have it, this is, this is too small, but yeah, we, sometimes we have small dunk tank, and the kids love jumping over there, and even it's a little cold, but they, they do it.
I have a question, on your distribution map.
Yes.
It shows a bar, eight foot bar area, it looks like it's right in the middle of the sidewalk, and I think I read somewhere that they didn't want the sidewalk blocked, is, is that going to be moved somewhere else?
Yes, and that's one of the things that David was telling me, since I couldn't zoom it more, I, I mean, the, the squares, it was based on the measurement, but you can't see the, the real, you know, I was, I was trying to get the, the, the map from, from the Enfield town, but I couldn't zoom it as, 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 you know, the, the way we want it, but yeah, nothing is just right, right next to the, to the sidewalk, or to the, or to the, um, to the road, we usually, you know, when the fence is, we cover it, and we, we always stay like, at least two, two or three feet away from it, and everything goes inside, you know, it's, it's pretty much for, for security, we expand it, and then we put everything in there, as I said, it's not describing exactly the, like, how it is, but it's, the space is, is big, because actually, I put eight feet on it, but, but the actual size of, of the bar, that, the portable bar that we use for the, for the margarita, is about two, two or three feet wide only, it's, it's, it's small, and, and the cooler, so-
Just wanna be sure you weren't blocking the sidewalk.
No.
Another question I had was, you, you obviously have a liquor permit for your restaurant, do they allow you to have alcohol outside?
Yes, what we do is, also, we have a form coming from, from the liquor department, that it's signed by the fire marshal, and signed by zoning, and we got the permit from fire marshal, he signed it, and we're just missing that from zoning, and what we do is just go to, to, to the liquor commission, and pay the, the fee for the outdoor event, and that's it, that, that's always-
So you have to get some special permit to do it outside?
Correct, and they send us back with the stamp of, of that sheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, the fire marshal-
Charlie was, there was outside music and, and noise, and I didn't know if that, the noise was an issue to neighbors.
There are no neighbors, and I think it was mentioned by Rachel, was it at one of the meetings, and all you have is, well, you got Hazet Avenue on one side, and you got the Olive Garden on the other side, and you got-
Aspen Dental.
Freshwater.
Aspen Dental, and, uh-
So it, it is all business neighbors?
They're all, it's all, yeah, it's a business neighborhood.
So, and we do have the town noise ordinance, we do have a town noise ordinance.
He just didn't want to have the decibels up too high, I-
Oh, no, no, it will be enough, you know, to cover just that, that small space that, that, that we, we are.
He'd, he'd still have to make the town noise ordinance if they get a DJ that decides he, he wants to blast them out of there.
Oh, no, no. Oh, and, and, and another thing is, since we will take the, the parking spot, the handicap parking spot, we always put the signs on front, like, giving, put the spaces limited for, for handicap, the ones that it are in front of the building, and also, the owner has a contract with the whole building, I mean, the whole shopping center, to, to use and share the parking spaces, and the good thing about this, it's falling on Monday, so Monday, the whole shopping center is, is, is pretty quiet, it's not-
But other years, you'd have a problem, maybe, if the, the date moves to another day.
Correct, if it was on Saturday?
Yeah, so that's why we require each year authorization, rechecking by the fire department or the police department, both of them usually.
Gets pretty busy on the weekend with the restaurants, now two restaurants.
Yeah.
I think the major concern was the traffic flow, because you do have to go in and out on the front of that, and that was the initial thing, when Rachel told us that you wanted to do this, was the traffic flow down the front there, along the Hazard, Hazard, you know, Hazard Avenue side, because it's a straight-through drive there, in fact, I think it's both directions you go.
Correct, yeah, it's both, both directions.
From Mo's all the way down to Olive Garden around.
We can always move the entrance to the, to the side of the building, if, if, if you want for, for safety purposes, like, keep, keep the sidewalk open.
That's your main entrance anyhow, and, and the, the police and fire have already checked this, I think the fire had some questions, it seems, there apparently, and that's gonna be one of the major conditions, the police had no concerns, except they wanted the barricades and cones were used, and you have two officers there, which, which helps, and you said you have your own security, I think there was concerns by, well, that was about it, North Central Health District, but I'm sure, they're gonna be right there with you, but basically, I'm sure.
Yeah, and you know, if, they said not cooking, so we're just gonna put, and it's simple, since, as I said, it's, I would say, too much stress for us to bring in the whole buffet outside, it's just simple tacos outside, you know, we, we get the rice, the beans, pre-cooked from the inside, and we keep it warm, rice, beans, how they want it, picadillo, queso, and good to go.
Okay.
Charlie, I have a question on-
Sorry, go ahead.
General condition eleven, it talks about, for twelve, actually, event hours shall not extend beyond sundown, but I was going to put a condition, outdoor event hours, because they're gonna be going inside and continuing this celebration, but this says event hours, so it should be outdoor event hours.
Correct.
You want that changed?
Yes, absolutely, otherwise, they'd close the restaurant at eight o'clock, the event's over.
No.
Which, what numbers, what numbers is?
Twelve. Just change twelve to outdoor event hours shall not extend beyond sundown.
Well, that's what this request is, but it's good to make, make it definite what it is.
A little clearer.
Outdoor. Event hours?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Just put the word outdoor.
Outdoor.
In number twelve.
Yeah, start it with outdoor.
It's in.
Okay, have you read the fifteen, uh, conditions?
Yes.
Any problems with them?
No, none at all.
Okay, the only thing I wanted, and, and just so that they know that we've checked, I would add two more, oh, they've already taken two of that, uh, preparation of food and the serving of beverages shall be in accordance with the requirements of the health district.
Yes.
Where are we on that?
Uh, that would be, I don't know wherever you'd wanna put it. You have applicable building and fire codes must be complied with, but there's nothing, the, well, you have North Central Health District, maybe, maybe you don't need it, I-
Should get a- I mean, yeah, they have to, they have to have approval each year, that's, that's written into our regulations.
Yeah, so, uh-
I mean, that's-
Yeah, then I, I guess that's there, they need it anyway, because they're not gonna operate their food service anyway, so disregard that, I just thought it might be a little bit stronger, but you do have it covered.
The other one that I had was number fourteen, about parking need analysis, because the-
I think eventually, because I, I just had in the back of my head why it would be so much easier if they could do it out in the back, I know it creates a problem for him, but that parking lot is so much bigger, but- But you have an exit from your building, but I don't know where that exit comes from.
It's, uh, from the outside. The only thing that, eh, if we do it in the back is, uh, you know, the, the trash container is in the back.
Ah.
It will be.
Yeah, not too nice.
Not too nice, yeah.
That's also, I don't know if you can see on the map, but that blue line is the boundaries of what's owned by this parcel.
Oh, correct.
So it's, the challenge is, is that the, while they share parking, the parking lot with, um.
Olive Garden.
Yeah, while they share with Olive Garden and also all of the twenty-five Hazard Ave Plaza.
Yeah, yeah.
That's actually separate ownership. So it.
Back is, uh, Ocean State?
Yep.
The whole.
That whole piece is owned by a different company.
All right. Cuz I know people park there because it's, it's never full.
Right. And it is part of their, their parking, there's a parking agreement, and when we had Chick-fil-A, they included both Plaza Azteca and Olive Garden. Those buildings are both included in their calculations.
Yeah.
So it is being considered as part of the same group in terms of parking, so that's a, a help.
Okay, I, I, cuz it may, it, it sounds like a nice idea. It's nice to have, you know, that celebration. It's too bad, it's so tight.
It could be that the ownership, if you got permission from the ownership for the other parcel.
You'd have to, yeah, you'd have to probably get into agreements from each owner somehow.
Yeah.
Something to think about another year if you can.
Absolutely.
I mean, if, if it grows or becomes popular, it's something to think about if you get the other people to agree to let you use that back area. But, okay.
That's next year.
That's, yeah, that's another, another year. Any, any further questions, Ryan, Peter?
Okay, um, there's nothing further. I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, let me close. Um, nothing from you need?
Nope, as long as you're, I just wanted to check on the parking piece because it was something I had put in there.
I thought it.
So as, as long as you all are okay. It says, parking needs analysis shall be conducted prior to subsequent events and reported to the department. That's condition number fourteen.
Hold on. Fourteen, yeah, the analysis, yeah.
Right, so as long as you all are okay with that language.
Oh, yeah. I thought, okay. Yeah, I, I agree because, uh, if he go, if he can get an agreement from everybody else or the owners, whoever controls it, and he wants to go out back, of course, there's gonna be another deal with the health department and so forth. Please, we'd have to redo it. Well, we have to re, basically redo it anyway, if he changes. But, yeah, that's, something should be in there. Okay.
So is fourteen cover your issue?
Yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, she just wanted to know.
So the only change then is, is twelve, outdoor event.
Yeah, they're adding the word outdoor.
Okay. You through?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, I didn't close it. I'll close the publica, uh, I'm sorry, SPR sixteen seventeen.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to waive full submission requirements of section nine point ten point two because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the applicants, applications conformance with these regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? And you have no problem with the conditions?
No, not a problem.
Well, this is just a waiver. Okay, Charles Durrell?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Peter Falk, four, and Ronald Gregory?
Four.
It's four, four.
Four, four. No opposed and no abstentions.
Okay.
Good luck, and it sounds like.
We gotta vote on the motion.
I'm so hurt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan review sixteen seventeen. Site plan review for the recurring outdoor special event at an existing building located at thirty-nine Hazard Avenue in a business regional BR district map fifty-six lot two. Manuel Rubio applicant Leo BHW LTD LLC owner. And, um, this approval is contingent upon the, uh, was it fifteen conditions, uh, listed in Rachel Blatt's memo dated April eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. The only change would be to condition twelve, which would change the, uh, add outdoor in front of event, so it'll be outdoor event hours shall not extend beyond sundown. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? As I said before, it, it's great to, to have another proof, a celebration and, uh.
It's gonna be a lot of people there.
Hope it, it grows, yeah.
Yes, but yeah, we're, we're gonna be ready.
Could be a good function.
So, uh, you know, you got a great organization here, a great building, great location, great restaurant, and, uh, we're happy that you're hea- heard in the first place. The fact that you're doing this will help attract more people to come down, so thank you.
You know, it's bringing something new, you know, and since it's been popular in other locations, we wanna keep doing it the, the way it is. You know, the family loves them, and it's just a great event, you know, to attract the community to something different once a year.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, all, uh, ready for the vote?
Infield likes to party.
Infield likes to party.
The ready, so call the Earl.
Okay, Charles Durrell?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Peter Falk, four, and Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Four, four, uh, none opposed and, uh, no abstentions. It passes.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For choosing Enfield.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we're actually out tomorrow.
We got two cops and he's got security, so.
Good thing.
Uh, SPR sixteen eighteen, site plan review for seasonal outdoor display of live potted plants at an existing bu- building located at seventy-five Freshwater Boulevard in a business regional BR district map fifty-seven lot thirty, three forty-six. Costco wholesalers, number seven eighty. Applicant Centro GA Freshwater State Line LLC owners. Uh, this is postponed to the meeting of May first.
I think you called it sixteen eighteen. Looks like sixteen nineteen.
Nope, that's sixteen, sixteen eighteen is the Costco application. And they, they are postponed. It's not in the packet.
Oh, okay.
And it's because they, we have to clear up something there, um, approval from the owner, cuz it's, uh, Costco actually doesn't own the property.
So sixteen eighteen.
I just have to call it because it's on the, uh, agenda.
Agenda, okay.
So a motion would be in order to, uh.
Table?
Table until the, the meeting of May first.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Well, I'm sorry.
Charles Durrell?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard?
Uh, four.
Peter Falk, four, and Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Four fours.
It's unanimous. Okay, sixteen nineteen now.
There you go.
There we go.
Made it.
It's not even late. Uh, site plan review, change the use of an existing building to a takeout restaurant property located at fifty-five Enfield Street in a business local BL district map thirty-five lot two zero seven. Mary Pang applicant Eliot Realty LLC owner. It's been at the ART, and the applicants, I, they're already seated. If you'll give your names and addresses, please.
Okay, my name's Mary Pang, uh, uh, fifty-five Enfield Street for the takeout res, uh, Chinese takeout.
Put your home addresses, the Westfield?
Yeah, Westfield.
Or Holyoke?
One ninety-one South Wickrow, Westfield, Massachusetts.
Okay.
Zero one zero eight five.
Okay, and the gentleman with you is?
Uh, my husband, yeah, living with me.
Okay, you wanna give his name, too?
Yeah.
Please?
Jimmy Pang.
Okay, and the same address?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, yes. Okay, th- this is a, uh, building that's served a lot of purposes, as you see from, uh, the, the report. I remember the, uh, bagel shop that wasn't there too, too long, and, uh, the store. And it's been other things way back, I guess, before the records were kept. Uh, it's a sister store to the one next door, which is the seafood place.
Steve's?
The Steve's, yeah. And, uh, I think the tattoo parlor's been closed for quite a while.
Yeah, I don't know the dates, but it's, it's been a while.
Long time, yeah.
So, uh, if you will.
Eight years.
Yeah. So if you will, please, explain what it is you wanna do, because not only to us, but you have to explain to the people out.
You're on television.
You're on television.
Okay. Uh, we need a change to Chinese takeout, so, you know, the tattoo, you know, building, leave it down there, don't look good. So if we change it, you know, look better, so convenient for the customer and takeout for, you know, take home for food.
Okay. Uh, so it's, is there any sit-down? Are you gonna have any sit-down in there?
Uh, no, just only takeout because the only parking, the space is, you know, short and, you know, only.
But no tables at all, not even one or two?
Maybe one. We have a dinner, so we'll sit down there for, you know, self.
Oh, for yourself, okay, okay. So it'll be strictly takeout?
Takeout, yes.
Uh, okay, uh, now, there was a lot of conditions here. The water pollution needed more detail, and that's due to the grease trap. Uh, and I know you handled that in the, uh, it's on an aquifer, so that's also handled there. How, how do we handle this?
Uh, grease trap, we need a pres- pres- percentage of people to do the, you know, drawing, the P, you know, the grease truck.
Okay. But sometimes they've allowed, not in the ground grease traps, but they've allowed separators somehow. Is, is that what they're trying to decide, the size?
Um.
Uh, in.
My understanding was in, so that in the e- email from Dan Parisi, that the details that they're looking for are related to the sewer pipes. Um, and particularly, they're looking for those details on terms of the diameter, slope, location, and type of pipe.
They don't know, because that's been used for everything for all these years. That, that picked up, too. I'm, I was talking to the grease trap, but that's all right.
Yeah, they did discuss, the grease trap, I believe, has been discussed with Dan, and he did bring it up at the, to the outdoor version, um, during the ART.
For the grease trap. But I did read that on, on the thing. That's not on any of the, on any plans anywhere?
It is on the plan, on the site plan, on the second page.
No, I'm not talking about that. His requirement, the slope and, and so forth of the pipes.
Right, is not on the plan, and he'd like to see it added.
It's not on the plans? And they don't ever have that? These people have to do that?
That's his requirement. I don't.
No, I, I.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Because that, I don't know what predates, I don't even know how old that building is. That, that's probably been there since, that's not an original building, but it's been there for a long time. And it's been occupied.
Data mist goes back to nineteen sixty-nine.
Yeah.
Office building.
Office building.
Yeah.
And my, it's my understanding, so the fact, I'm reading the last line on his email. It says, um, so show on the plans the sanitary sewer detail, the six-inch stone above and below the pipe, then filter fabric, then warning tape, the minimum slope, and then show on the plans, the town of Enfield, um, fog unit detail, which is the grease trap. Um, so I believe it's all about adding the details that are sort of standard pieces to the plans. That's how I'm reading it, is that if it's the show.
I read it that they had to locate the grease trap, I mean, the pipe, uh, that goes out to, uh.
To everything, the, oh, onto the, yeah, that I'm not sure.
That seems like, I, I don't know. I suppose somebody has to do it, but why would you put it on an applicant for the restaurant? It's the owner. Other people have been in there, and they never asked them, or that I know of. They could've.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Unless it's a big de, if it's not a big deal, but, uh, uh, maybe inexpensive, they have to find out all that. I don't.
This page.
I, it's just, I just wondered why they would ask that. Cuz it's been a restaurant that they had the bagel shop, unless they didn't do cooking. I don't know what that was.
Hmm.
It's been, but it's been, they've had food in there before. I, all right, I guess I can't argue with them if they want it, but. And the health department was concerned on waste disposal. You, you were planning to use fifty-gallon, uh, galvanized barrels, I guess, with lids. Police department had no concerns. Uh, this is in, what, what are they, what's the title now, the district? Cuz, uh, Rachel found the plans I've been talking about, finally.
So this, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you guys a copy of this. This is a, Jim, this was found today. That years ago, there was a plan done, a proposal done for the area of State Line to reduce the number of turning movements and narrow to fewer numbers of driveways. And it was, doesn't even have a date.
It goes back.
It goes back many years, but it actually doesn't have a date listed. But it has a proposal for, that covers your, this property, um, as an idea of how you could reduce the number of turns. So these are, I've got copies for Jimmy, too.
This is what I was talking about. We didn't know what it was filed, but there were some other older people around that recalled it, too, and she found it in the engineering department.
The gateway.
Thank you. This is, this is the, your, your, yeah. And it was an idea to, to reduce the number of driveways.
That's when I was on the council back in the nineties.
I don't know what it was done. I just remember it. I don't know if it was P and Z, or council, or who did it.
I think it was the council.
It could, it is to the public.
Yeah, I think it was the council, cuz it did the trees, too, and they did plant a lot of the trees on there. And I think this was, yes, it was May, May State Line to I ninety-one, and that's what I told you, it's two, so ninety-one was in there.
One of the problems that they had with all the plantings, though, is it ate up parking, and there wasn't that much parking in front of the buildings in the first place.
True. But as I told Rachel, and I'd recalled, that that's how we got bookends to do what they did out front, and the McDonald's and the other ones that are on the right-hand side. And we, we really never had any opportunity. And it's rather difficult now that these are separate parcels. This is a separate parcel from Steve's, I imagine, now.
It, it is a separate parcel.
Yeah, seeing that. I think it used to be a single parcel. So you can't really, you'd have to share parking, and that's what that, that's what they've been trying to do. Uh, cuz I know in all these restaurants, a nice restaurant, there, people have to back out into Route Five traffic, and it's a tough, it's a tough area. Uh, even Steve has a problem when they try to get out onto Route Five, especially about.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock, yeah, for, 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 for on, too, anything coming off.
I go to the barber up there. It's always tough to get out.
Yeah, but it, it, it can be done. But this was just a suggestion, but it, again, you can see, uh, see how it comes in. I don't, I don't know. It's, you notice that, that the back end, is it, yeah. That's on the other side. But this, but that's just that. She dug it up, and then I guess found it over at the engineering. She's gonna keep it and see if we could ever do anything with it.
But that business is takeout, so the cars aren't going to be there for any length of time.
No, they aren't, but that's not the problem. Problem's getting out of there at certain times.
It's tough.
It's tough. But that's all, yeah, they do.
I mean, I go to Steve's all the time and.
Yeah, I know. I just stay off of ninety-one, cuz I go in the back way and come over on the side to Steve's, and you go from Steve's parking lot, you can go through to this one, cuz they're next door to each other.
I pull in through those potholes.
Other than this looks pretty, is there any impact on what she's proposing?
Uh, no, I guess you can. It's, it's just something to, to show them if they could work it into what they're doing. I thought it showed more. I, I thought it was part of one of our regulations, and apparently it wasn't.
No, it was a council thing.
Was it a council thing?
So it's not, it's not a requirement. It's a, it's an idea at this point.
Yeah. But we, we could always put it into ours. That's what I said to Rachel. It should've been put into the, as a, at least a guide for that area.
Right, so that if somebody comes up, cuz, you know, we, we did just have the, the one tenant change that left another property up there. That was the Angie State Line Package Store, just, you know, just got approved to move. So that's another vacant space that if it gets taken over by a different.
And they have a large, they have. And they have a large, they have a large parking area there.
That it's, it's an idea that can be presented sort of to other applicants at the early stages, when they're looking at ideas of how to design something.
It was just something they put out, okay. But how, how do we take care of all these concerns, cause they haven't been all solved? The engineering said they may require changes to the plan, they need a professional engineer. And the fire had a question with the hood exhausts. And if they go into the, the grease trap tanks, they'll have to have a, go through the aquifer protection.
That's it. We have to still look into whether or not that has to happen. There, again, that says, we're still working on developing, you know, figuring all that out with the aquifer protection.
So how do I, how do we give approval, let's say, tonight with all these requests? I think it's a good thing. It needs to be, it's an excellent location. Uses a building that needs to be used. And, and that fills a void up in that area. There, there isn't a Chinese restaurant up there.
Add some conditions.
Yeah, I guess we have to load it with conditions. Well, then we'll do that. We, and hours of operation are eleven till ten, Monday through Sundays, seven days a week. Ten AM to, eleven AM to ten PM. Well, let's, let's work on it, though, on the condition.
Let me throw out my, my change here, and that's the condition four, and this is where I brought it up earlier. The fact the copy of approval letter is stapled to the drawings, and they have some beautiful drawings here, that those conditions should be incorporated into those drawings.
That's true, they do have larger ones.
Cause based on what the engineering department's gonna say, they may have to come back and do some changes to the drawings as well.
Yeah, it's a good location, I, I.
So what kind of conditions did you want to incorporate here that aren't listed already?
Uh, let's find out. They, they want the, traffic safety officer had no problems with it. Water pollution, I gotta find the conditions, but there was something else I was trying to check.
Water pollution is number twelve, is your exhibit number twelve, and engineering is your exhibit number fourteen.
Okay. Okay, and they wanted a change to the minimum of eight inch thick concrete for the dumpster. That's in the letter from John Kabibow, along with the gravel parking area, they didn't know where it is. So he had engineering concerns.
I think it's, there's a, there's, so there's a deep, there, I think what John's concerns were is on the details shown on the site plan, and it's this, it's an older site plan that was modified to indicate that, because it's a site plan that's pre-existing. And I think where he was concerned was that the details need to match this proposal, and not the previous proposal.
There's no houses in the immediate neighborhood, so the exhaust isn't gonna disturb them. You know, sometimes people complain about that, I was thinking of the exhaust disposal, I guess. Let me find the conditions.
Oh, we've got the menu.
Yeah, the only thing on the menu, there's no general's chicken for taking.
Yeah, we do.
We do, I saw it was a large, large piece there, by itself. I, I didn't see a combination.
Combination twenty-five, eight twenty-five.
Oh, okay, then I'll set.
We can make it small for you.
Uh, okay. Let's see. The town engineer. I'm trying to see where all this. No, it doesn't mention that they meet the requirements of these agencies. Do you have anything that covers them, the engineer? Or the fire? I don't see.
In the conditions?
Yeah.
I, I didn't put one in.
Yeah, they should be, because they're, they're the ones that are gonna hold this thing up.
Right.
So, that's, there's no condition for water pollution. There's no condition for North Central Health. There's no condition for engineering, and there's no condition for the fire.
Okay.
And there's nothing in there about the hours of operation, which we all should have in. So you need to add one, two, three, four, five conditions.
So hours of operation goes on the general conditions, so it'd be that your hours are.
It's listed on exhibit five.
Eleven AM to ten PM.
Yeah.
Seven days a week. Are those the hours you'd be happy with? Cause we could give them differently if you, if you wanted. You wanna stay with eleven to, eleven to ten?
Eleven to ten, yeah.
Seven days a week?
Uh-huh.
All right, cause if you change them, you'd, you'd have to come back, so.
No change.
Okay.
Or if you made them longer, you'd have to come back, if you made them shorter.
Shorter is, is different, but if you wanted to go longer, you'd have to come back. That's all, I just wanted to make sure you wanted to stay it that way, okay. And how, how do we word that the conditions of, we could bunch them all into one, or like you did on the last one? Instead of each one separate?
Well, there's, I mean, there are many concerns here, it's, and I'm looking at John's.
Yeah, there are.
And it's in, you know, it's a.
I wish there weren't as many, because it seems like it'd be so easy to just move in there, cause it's been used as a food.
Right, and what.
Of course, conditions are changed, since people have been in there with the food, but.
And John's, and John's last comment is that any site plan showing site improvements, such as the grease trap, dumpster, powder, pavement improvements, should be signed and sealed by a professional, by the professional engineer who designed those improvements. So.
So they'd have to come back anyhow, right, if they do that?
Well, it would be an added plan, so as long, it would be up to the commission if they, if you all are okay with them. Something that work in having a John's approval and.
Okay, so word it that way.
Okay.
I don't wanna have them go through too many hoops. They have enough problems trying to open a business.
And so would that be before signing, before, probably?
Well, yeah, you got, before.
The engineering approvals, they gotta be before signing.
And just to have the building occupied is, it'll be an improvement.
So engineering.
The brickwork, I understand, needs some work.
Yeah, paint the white so it'll look better, yeah.
How about the pointing and the bricks and everything, is that, are you purchasing the property or renting?
Uh, I will purchase, if it, you know, proves, so I will purchase.
Oh, very nice.
So it'll look better, so fix out.
Oh, okay, when they're occupied, good. So.
So those four requirements would be before signing of the plans, and that's the water pollution control. All their conditions are met, North Central Health is met, engineering is met, and fire is met.
Yeah, engineering, fire, north and, uh, north central. She has, uh,
She has.
She has the aquifer in there.
And it's, that's an if needed, because again, we're not certain if you will need it.
Just water pollution control, North Central Health, engineering, and fire.
There's no sense in having.
Debbie put in four conditions that she wanted, Corona.
Okay.
Yeah, but the, that is not in ours.
Should it be?
We're all, well, it is, when we say that the North, North Central Health Department, that's Debbie Corona.
Right.
That her conditions have to be met. We're just saying that in here.
Okay.
So.
Those are the conditions.
Those are the conditions, which they have, they've already met. We're just.
Confirming it.
Confirming it in, in our conditions that they have to do it.
And that's before that, before this is finalized, that this would be the approval, but then before it's all signed and stamped.
Would you, uh, Rachel, would you read the, how you wrote the conditions?
Sure, so I have it in as, um, it can be done either as one, one group or several memos to the file confirming all concerns have been met from, shall be submitted from WPC Engineering, North Central District Health.
Fire marshal.
And a fire marshal.
And fire marshal.
And that's one condition you're putting it in there?
I can do it as one, or I can separate them out.
No, one is good.
One is good?
What is one, okay, as long as Peter knows one covers it.
But each individual group has to submit their letter of saying these drawings comply with their requirements.
Right, so once you make the changes that they require of you, you bring on the final drawings, and they'll get signed by the secretary of the commission. So after all of those groups give their final.
Oh, and you're gonna put in hours of operation?
And then the out, yes, so that would be number seven, would be memos to the file.
What numbers, where are the numbers there now, that's all. Okay, have you, you've got the copy of the conditions that we have now that are in here? You don't? Do you? I can give you this, I can give you my copies.
The letter that you received from, from Barbara in an email?
Let me give you this. He's gonna take, oh, all right, he has it?
It's the guy who made the drawings, Jim Treba. Look in the drawer, it's his name on there.
Treba.
Treba.
The ones that were submitted, that I guess Barbara sent to you, have twenty conditions, so we've added a, a few that she was, we were just talking about.
Yep.
Okay, do you have any problems with those?
No.
Okay, and how about the ones that we, we have added, the ones that you must receive approval from all the other departments?
We, um, let me explain about the grease trap.
Okay.
We wanted to put in the internal one, as you mentioned earlier.
Right.
And Mr. Parisi said, no, we have to put the external one in the ground, the large concrete tank. And so I showed it on my site plan, but we will have a professional engineer design the depth of it, and the piping, and the slope of the pipe.
Oh, all right, and that was for the grease trap, not for the whole sewer line, then?
No, no.
Oh, cause I, I was wondering why in the world they want the whole sewer line?
It's just for the grease trap, and it has to be vented, and I went through all that, but, uh, we didn't have anybody capable, so we will have a proper engineer do that before it's.
All right, well, that was what we were adding in there, that the fire department wanted to know about the location of the vent. And you had John Kabibow, who wants to know about the concrete pad for, what, the dumpsters, or the, or the rubbish barrels?
Right, and I think it might need to, it looks like it may need to be bigger based on Mary Corona, from, Debbie Corona at North Central District Health.
So they have a piece in that, too?
Well, on the site plan, I showed two barrels, and in my last talk with Debbie and, and her memo, she wanted three barrels. And I, we don't have a problem with that.
Okay, well, they just, all, all we're saying is let them sort it out, but they have to give the letter to the, so the secretary can sign our approval. So what we're doing is really saying, let them fight it out, when you finish with them, all they have to do is submit a letter to us, so that he can sign the plans. And who was it, fires?
So it would be the.
Water pollution, engineering, and the last one was, uh.
North Central.
North Central. So those four groups, the, the, get the letters in, cause they all had concerns that may or may not be met. Cause they aren't on the plans that we have. You may have submitted new plans to them, but we don't have them.
Well, on the, on the site plan, Rachel, they, they show a concrete design for the dumpster.
Right, so what he was saying is, cause the mic's a little far, is, um, that the, if you look at the site plan, there is a concrete pad shown, and the detail is shown. But it might, it sounded like in John's comment that he, the depth might need to be amended?
Yes, it now requires eight inches of concrete, and I think that plan shows something like.
Six, it, oh, five inches of concrete was the older.
It's gotta be changed to.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what it, yeah, we get the letter that it's been changed, and we'd be all set. That's all we're asking. So no problems with the additions, okay.
So on condition four, where it currently says, we're going to staple these approvals to the drawing, these, I would like to have it say included in, or whatever.
Incorporated?
Incorporated into the drawings, so it's not stapled on, it's part of the drawing, so it follows in the files forever. It doesn't accidentally get ripped off.
Okay.
So we'll send you a signed copy, with the, clean copy with the new add additions, and then we'll take the PDF and just, tape them onto a twenty-four by thirty-six. And scan that, so that it's, it fits with your nice drawings.
I see it over here. It's over here, party special.
Yeah, right, and that's a party.
Yeah, that's a party.
He's still looking for General Towns.
It was down here.
Eight twenty-five.
Eight twenty-five, she, she knows the numbers. Combination planner.
Um, twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, we're all set.
So what condition is the, the engineering, North Central, and all that?
Condition number seven.
Seven. And the hours of operation, which one's that?
Condition number twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
And you're changing what, you're changing the line in condition number four.
Right.
This is Musu four.
Sounds good.
Stop that.
Don't read anymore, we're getting hungry.
I haven't even had supper yet.
Oh, okay. Okay, we got that squared away, and they have no problems. Any reason to keep this open or anything? We got it set. Uh, this requires a waiver again, Peter.
Okay, I'd like to make, make a motion.
Let me close, no reason to keep it open, we're all set. I'll close SPR sixteen nineteen.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of section nine point ten point two, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to waive the submissions. Take the rule.
Charles Duran?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Peter Falk?
Four.
Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Four fours.
Four fours, no opposed, and no extensions.
Motion passes with a waiver.
I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan review sixteen nineteen. Site plan review to change the use of the existing building to a takeout restaurant, property located at fifty-five Enfield Street, and a business local BL district, map thirty-five, lot two oh seven. Mary Poon, applicant, Eli Real P L L C, owner. We have a letter from Rachel Blatt dated April eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, and it currently has twenty conditions, and we're adding two more. One being the addition of a conditional letters from the water pollution, North Central Mental Health, not Mental Health, North Central Health District, engineering department, and the fire department. And another one, another condition being the hours of operation, ten AM to, eleven AM to ten PM, seven days a week. And the changing of condition four. to a, what was the word? Not include, but incorporate?
Mm-hmm.
Incorporate the, these conditions into the drawing.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, I think it's great that you're taking this upon yourself to do this. It's, you know, improving the neighborhood and, and providing some excellent food for your customers, and it's just a, a good thing for Enfield to have you there. Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna welcome you to Enfield, and thank you for choosing Enfield. And it does help the area in taking a, an older building that's been not in use for several years and turning it to a good use. And we hope you much success for, for your endeavor.
Ready?
Yes, call a roll.
Charles Duran?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard?
Four.
Peter Falk? Four. And Ronald Gregory?
Four.
Four fours.
Four four, no against, and no extensions.
Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Who seconded?
Did you second it?
Please.
Please, okay, thank you.
Oh, I don't know. This is not only two people you could choose from.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving. Oh, thank you. Uh, moving on, other business none, applications received. You got anything?
I do.
Oh, wonderful.
We are busy, busy.
Well, we tried to get you more help.
And I've got some application that I, is on the other page.
Okay, public hearing.
Okay, so we have, on applications we received, this is a special permit to extend the concrete pad ten feet by twelve feet at a hundred Elm Street and Business Regional District. It's Zantaya Group. And this goes along with, this is one that had gone to the ZBA. Because it's a-
Oh, this is a gas station.
Is, is, this is the mobile station in front of the Enfield Square. The concrete pad is an appro, it was approved, but we have the building permit that they, that shows when it was approved. But it is not in the ideal location, and they're also a little bit over their coverage. And it was, went to the zoning Board of Appeals, and zoning Board of Appeals is looking at it and said, kick it back to planning and zoning because it's a temporary pad. It will go away in several years, and they wanna to build that into the, a condition. And we'll get you all the material that, from them if, if that would be helpful to explain sort of the process of this thing.
But what does it mean to extend? Are you extending the use of it, or extending-
Extending the pad itself. There's a concrete pad existing with remediation equipment on top of the pad. They need to extend the pads so that they can contain all the equipment in-
And the equipment was all approved?
Yeah, the equipment would all be, you know, an accessory structure that's in the, on top of this thing.
That's all been approved though prior?
It is new, it's a different equipment system.
Yeah, but how about the old equipment that was there? 'Cause I don't remember doing it.
It was, it was, I have to think. I think because it was just, it may have gone through just the building permits.
Yeah, that's what I'd heard.
Because it's, it's an accessory structure, it's accessory equipment that was-
Yeah, so that, that was a discussion, I know, at ZBA. Okay. That's why it's here.
Right.
That's the one I'm thinking of.
So the, ZBA has looked at it? I gave you the wrong thing.
The proper permits, yeah. Okay, well, okay.
So that's why it's a special permit, is that it was, it is something that has been before the ZBA and is a little bit of a different look.
And-
Look at you everything.
Prior approvals where they were for, if they were given from us?
Mm-hmm.
'Cause it is a structure.
Right. I think you-
I know, I, I know. This is, yeah, okay.
So I can ask, 'cause they, they've only put down the, to extend the pad, and I think that is all that they need. I have to double check my notes. That that, I think is all that they need, the official approval, and because the equipment is, is conforming to the requirements?
Yeah, but whoever approved it is what I want. If it's there, if it's not approved, well, you have to approve that. That's why I wanna know who approved it. 'Cause if it's a, if it's considered a structure or-
Well, it will be in a, it will be contained.
It's separate from the building.
I can tell you, I have the plans. It's going to be a contained unit. I believe it's gonna be eight feet tall.
Yeah, I mean-
We, it's been, yeah, we've looked at it. It went to, this has been to ART.
That a building department could just approve it without zoning. That's why I wanted to see if it's-
So we should, so let me talk, so I think then it's a, really the special permit is to extend the pad and the accessory structure on top.
Yeah, well, they need approval for it, not, not to extend it. Maybe they gotta start all over again. I don't know. I just, where they got the approval from?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a brand-new structure that they will be bringing in.
Well, my memory sometimes may be faulty, but I don't remember ever dealing with that.
So it, since it is also the structure, I will-
There were a period of times I wasn't here too, so, but-
The hearing dates, our next hearing dates are May first and May fifteenth. There is a management plan to this system that I'm thinking that John should probably take a look at.
Oh, absolutely.
And with the holiday tomorrow, I'm thinking that May fifteenth may, may be the way to go to give him some time to really read it.
Absolutely, yep. It's a mobile station, yeah. Yep. So May fifteenth. SPR sixteen twenty.
This one's a pretty simple one. They have a three, it's a existing industrial building. They have a three thousand square foot warehouse structure behind the main building. They're looking to replace that with a four thousand square foot structure. Sixteen seventy-five King.
Replace or add on?
It's a replace.
Yeah, but who, who-
The old CLMP building.
It's, um, Paquette Builders. It's the gas turbine and supply was the owner, is the owner of the building.
Right, and it's owner of Depot and-
Oh, 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 where we just had the log, or they were gonna make fertilizer.
Oh, the pellets, yes.
Yeah, yeah, the pellets.
So it says they've got three thousand, they're gonna go to four thousand. It's a slight change in shape.
So they have room down there to add with?
They've got plenty of space, yeah.
Yeah, I know they do, 'cause they used to have pole, the pole yard and everything else was down there.
Oh, yeah, transformer's the whole.
Oh, yeah, I mean, but there also is a phone tower in there. Communication tower. Well, yeah, but it's on their property. I don't know where this is going, yeah. Oh, okay.
It's in the same location. It's, it's just a long skinny, gets a little bit fatter. Long skinny building gets a little, a little bit squatter.
There's a long skinny one there by the pellet building too.
So the three thousand square foot, that three thousand, I think it might actually, I have to may look at that one too and see what the pellet, what if any impact this would have on the pellet?
Oh, yeah.
Item. And I'll grab whatever our history is on that communication.
So what do you think, and you're doing ARTs on these too?
They, they have not been to an ART. The Antaya Group, the public hearing has. They did not, 'cause it seemed pretty simple when we were looking at it.
Yeah, I know, but-
But I forgot about the pellets. I would say May first. It seems, it's a very straightforward change, I think.
Okay.
Except for the, except for this one pellet piece, so we'll look into that.
Yeah, well, Fire may wanna know about it.
Right. And all those, and all those reviews will still be done.
What is, it's gonna store though? Have they got a lot of traffic coming in and out with it, or is it their own? Is it?
Just their, yeah, it's just their own.
The construction company? That's Petronella, right?
It's, this is Paquette. So this might actually be a different site. I'm trying to remember the-
Uh, well, I don't know if the, the traffic item or not. It depends on what's coming in there. We'll check with it if they need to. You can put it on whatever you think, when you check it.
So we've already, we've sent it to-
Hate to get them in here and then find out there's gonna be a lot of trucks in and out of there.
Right. So we've already sent it to John in Engineering and to the Fire Marshal for them to take a look at this one.
All right.
Yeah, no, that-
It'd also be who's gonna use it 'cause of the trucking, if it's, depends on the amount of traffic in and out that one driveway. If they use the same driveway that the pellet company was using. 'Cause you can also get in off, off the other road into that property too.
Yeah, Depot will help.
Yeah.
So would you like me to add Mark Squires to this list of?
Yeah, just to find out what the traffic pattern is. He's got a lot of generals, generals, he's got a lot of land there to, to use it. Okay. So you could pick a date depending on what you think it ends up with, if they have everything ready to go.
Yeah. I, I think May first at this point unless-
Okay.
Unless we hear back from one of these folks that there's, it needs more, they need more time. It's, that's the only possibility.
Okay, well, let's go for May first. Uh, oh, this is a change. It's sixteen twenty-one.
And this is five eighty-five Enfield Street. It's where the produce market is?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's a, the produce market?
I'm not, I'm not aware of where that is.
Five eighty-five Enfield Street, up at the corner of Enfield Street in Montana.
It's on the end of that building.
Across from the American Legion.
Right.
Yeah.
This is where the, uh, Art or whatever used to have their, can store for selling used clothing?
Right.
Yeah, there's a pawn shop in there.
There's a pawn shop there.
You got the produce place, I believe, then a pawn shop, and then a convenience store, and then a nail places at the very end of things.
And this is where the parking lot is in, correct?
On the end of the building?
At the end of the building.
Yeah, we tried to get the north, north, uh, traffic safety officer wanted the north entrance closed because people use that as a cut-through. In other words, the light turns gre, uh, red, and they wanna go down the side street.
Through the parking lot.
Right, and that, that was closed off. That has been closed off. There's a, or at least it's been broken up so that there's a, the back entrance and the front parking areas are separated by a small grassy area.
Oh, that, but that's in the back on the side. What we're talking about on Enfield Street, there were two, two entrances, and they wanted, there's a south, south cut, south entrance and a north entrance, and then they got on the, I forget the name of the street.
Montana.
Montana Road, they, they got, that whole thing was open. So the only thing we had to go back to was there, but the traffic safety officer also wanted to get that front northern cut onto Enfield Street closed off so that they only had one entrance on Enfield Street and one exit or entrance, whatever you wanted to call it, on Montana. But the owner didn't wanna close off that northern one. We could try again.
Yeah, and so this has already been sent to Engineering, Mark Squires over at the Police, I went through, yeah, it went through inter-office mail already to the Police Department for the traffic safety officer, to the Health Department, and to the Fire Marshal.
I don't know if Mark was the traffic safety officer at that time.
I don't think so.
Well, we'll see what the answer, no. Well, we'll see what the answer is.
Trying to think his name now.
But they tried to, they wanted to get the, oh, he's the one that's doing the, uh-
Bob Santinella.
Yeah, he, and, yeah.
I think it's Santinella.
Santinella, he, yeah, he's, he's doing the, uh-
Doing blight.
Blight, yeah. Okay.
Investigations or whatever.
Uh, that's I thought he wanted to open a package store there, but he didn't, huh?
Right, so there was an approval for a package store, or at least the liquor permit, and that might be with the, one of the other locations in the, in the property?
They're even healthy, I guess.
I think it was just a beer permit.
Yeah, he wanted, yeah.
For the convenience store, maybe.
For the store.
For the convenience store.
Yeah.
But I think he owns that, nails on too. I think it's part of his-
Business, okay.
Business, and that's why he wants to change it to a
Okay.
yogurt shop and that way, you know, get more business.
Okay, so that's where that is, and is he all set to go?
I think they are, yeah, they're in good shape too, I would say. I think it's just the first one, there's, it's a hundred and thirty-eight page, pages in the remediation plan, so give them a chance to look it up. That's the, that public hearing, I think there's a little more for John to review. I think the other two are, the only thing is would be if we don't get a review, but so I would say May first on this one too.
All right. We just put the other one off on May first too, so that gives us at least four. That gives us four for May first.
Two for May first.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fifth, it gives three, because we just moved the one that didn't show up tonight, Costco.
Oh, you're right, and Costco. And I follow that should be on there. That Costco will be-
Take Costco first. Did you hear back, by the way, from the traffic safety engineer in Costco, or traffic safety?
Um, I can check.
What is it they're proposing?
Outdoor display of flowers and shrubs.
Oh, by town for a tire, oh, by town for a tire.
Seems to sell Christmas trees out of a trailer down near the woods.
But it might be, it might be good to have the drawings and take a chance to look at them yourselves first.
No, 'cause he should, no, he should have a comment on it.
He does, yeah.
Okay, good, all right, as long as he does.
But yeah, he did give us feedback. And then the last one was the one from before, that, that modification that came in, and that's on six Niblick Road.
Oh, okay, that's your, yeah, okay.
Right, so there's, there is one that's asked for, that has come forward for that administrative approval with, through minor, minor modification. And it's, this is six, six Niblick Road, and I've got the plan. It's a, this is an industrial building that was approved over the last summer for a building addition and some changes to the parking lot. And they're, what they've found is that the churning movements for the trucks won't work in the lay, in the configuration of the parking lot that they had. So they had take, they had indicated on their plans to remove one section of parking spaces and keep another, and they wanna flip-flop them because it'll be easier for the trucks to get in and out.
Engineering approval?
We will have, definitely have to have engineering approval, that final sign-off from engineering before it gets-
So that's part of the motion, the approval from the-
And it would be, um, it actually looks like the way that they worked it out is that they would actually gain two more parking spaces. I have to do a count again, but it looks like it would gain two. And, you know, we would definitely make sure that they keep the, the same amount of landscaping that they originally were approved for.
So the fact, well, it would make it better for the Fire Department to make turns too than I would imagine.
Yeah. So I can, I can have Fire Department take a look too, just so that they're aware of it.
They change in the radius, so they don't want it to affect them, so Fire and-
And Engineering.
Engineering. So the motion would be to allow the Planning Department to authorize the changes in conjunction with the Fire Department and the Town Engineering.
What's the address?
Six Niblick Road.
Six. Did you write that motion down? If you can read it back for us?
In a moment.
See, that's why we need a secretary here. I made a pitch for that too.
So I have
The motion would be to allow Assistant Town Planner-
So I motion to allow administrative approval of modifications to parking lot layout at six Niblick Road subject to approval from the Fire Marshal and the Engineering Department.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second? Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Charles Duran?
Four.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard, Peter Falk, four, and Ron Gregory?
Four.
Four fours.
Four, four, and no opposition and no abstentions. So have fun.
We'll double check it all.
Okay, anything else? Next planning workshop is May eighth. Will you send out emails to everybody to remind them?
Absolutely. This one, there's a lot of work that's gotta go into this one. I think it's gonna be- Absolutely, this one, there's a lot of work that's got to go into this one, I think it's going to be.
Do you want to tell, uh, some of the things that were announced last night, can you, about the farmer's market?
Oh, yes, farmer's market is moving, is, they're looking at moving it closer to the pond. So it'll be pond side, I think it's going to be a great thing, and they're going to be expanding it and opening it up to some, to other vendors, so more, it's going to be a broader community market as opposed to just the farm, just farmers, but farmers, of course, will be a central component.
They'll have to come in here though. They'll have to come in here for approval.
Approval of that layout?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to them. It is, it is exempt from the, because it's still town land?
Yeah, but they're planning to close the road.
And they are, I mean, Peter's leading the chart.
Around the sidewalk.
Yeah, they will be working with traffic safety, and traffic safety will be there.
It may be on town property, but it's, it's not on the town green.
No, but it is open, it is all town property, actually.
Yeah, I know that, but they still need approval.
The exemption goes to all town property. Yeah. Matt, actually, we looked at this. Let me see. Because I'll read it to you.
All right.
Whereabouts are you going to put that?
Well, they're going to close, they're going to close some streets.
They're going to close one, the idea right now, and it's still an idea, not finalized.
That's all.
Is to close one lane of, um,
North Main.
Of North Main, just for the section, um, down near the falls, from basically from the falls up five hundred feet roughly. So they would be closing the one lane and rerouting traffic, so it'd be one way in and then looping back.
Because that's, that before has never been, it's always been come through us because it's no different than like Collins Creamery having their car show, or they're having the car show over at the mall, or
Is it going to be on Saturday?
No, they're still going to look at, still planned it for Wednesday, but it would be a little bit later. So four, they're looking at roughly four to eight P M. right now, so that way it catches that crowd that's coming home from work from a little bit further afield.
They didn't want it on Saturday?
Yes, there's competition. And it's a great, I mean, I think it'll be a really good thing to enliven that area on a Wednesday evening.
Because some of the people go to several other markets, and I think we got in a little after some of them, so some go to Vernon, some go to wherever else, Grand.
Southfield.
So, Southfield, and so you have to find a little niche that you can fit.
Right, and the Wednesday thing, Wednesday, it's, I mean, they're looking at the possibility of maybe getting in some live entertainment. So a lot of more kids activities was, was one of the things that they were looking at, is how do you get activity tables for kids to do something? So it's more of a week, it's an event for, you know, families to come out and hang out around the pond, and then the fountains will be up already.
Let me hear what you're saying.
Paddle boats? Did you say paddle boats?
Fountains, the the air raiders, that's the official term, is the air raiders. So outdoor special events located on town-owned property authorized by the town council and/or the town manager pursuant to established policies, including but not limited to chapter fifty-four of the Enfield Town Code, Town Event Regulations for the Use of the Town Green and Gazebo, and the Town Facilities Use Policy shall be exempt from the need of for zoning permit.
That's for the, the green.
The green is the second part of that.
Then the gazebo.
That's, that's, that's number three down the list, is that if it, the first line of that is located on town-owned property authorized by, and outdoor special events located on town-owned property authorized by town council and/or town manager. Pursuant to all those other, all the rules.
Never used, never used for that.
Hey, when the helicopter lands, they come before.
They absolutely do, Fourth of July had to have all airs, when that Fourth of July helicopter lands, they come in. When the Fourth of July, or I'm sorry, they had
Parking lot?
This is only a year old, right?
Demonstration up at, uh, Memorial School. They had to get, uh,
But this is only a year old, this piece, right?
It never included all of that, it was just right out there on the town green. Doesn't include town sidewalks, that means that town could put up something on any sidewalk in town. I mean, that's really stretching it.
That's what it says.
Reading what's there.
Authorized by council or town manager, I mean, and pursuant to all of those other requirements, that as long as it's, you know, falls within.
Really, it is a green.
I mean, the green is included there, it's included but not limited to chapter fifty-four of the Enfield Code, the regulations for the use of the green and gazebo, and the town's facilities use policy. So if the school wants to do the fun fair, they're exempted as long as they're following the requirements from the town manager and the town council.
From the town green.
At the school.
That's what, oh, the school property.
Right, because that would fall under town's facilities use policy.
Well, I don't know why we do helicopter landings then for all these things and some of the other things that go on. That's a, well.
I don't know. But we did find that, that that's, that it does say the whole list. As long, I mean, I do know there will, the police will definitely be involved, fire will absolutely be involved.
A legal opinion, see if the town attorney says that's okay.
Do you want to read it?
I know, I know, I know.
I think you're stretching it personally.
Yeah, both of us have been on the council, I mean, there was not the intent at the time.
Well, that's, I don't know, because it does say
That's not the way it's been used.
The way it's written here, it looks like that it's effective as a five-one, this set of, the way this is written is effective as a five-one thirteen, which is less than a year ago.
That, that held true, the high school didn't have to come before us to approve that new building, or the athletic fields, they didn't have to come first to that either.
Well, this is, this is just, no, no, this is just the outdoor special events, this is only under outdoor special events. Do you want the football games to come?
Where's parking?
That's used, that's because you, you plan when you have, include the school, you always design the football field. That's part of the application, so naturally you have a football game.
And the fun fair?
Well, I don't know, but I know that, that part, you weren't talking about school, school use is different because that's a really
But that's town facilities.
I think we need to get that clarified, and the lawyer should be telling us that. If the lawyer says it, then we do it.
Yeah, it's all right, yeah.
Because it's interpretation.
It's where, it says located on
You're interpreting it one way, and he's interpreting it another way.
Well, I don't know, let me read it and see what's there, it's, it's, it's not what I understood it to be. No, it isn't. Where, which number?
Read the first two lines.
What is that book?
Yeah, but pursuant to established policy, the established policy is a whole click. And the established policy was they came here.
I mean, that's pursuant to town manager and town council, I think.
Pursuant to established policies. What's chapter fifty-four of the town code, you know?
Chapter fifty-four I do not have in front of me.
Yeah, the town facilities and use policy, well, I'd just be curious because if my references them, there must be a reason.
I mean, it lists out all of them, I mean, I think it's that as long as you're within keeping of all the other established policies for using town facilities for event purposes.
I truly think that, that you're establishing some criteria for here, and then the Joe Public gets smuckered because you didn't, you have, they had to get approval, but the town didn't for doing the same thing. Oh, it's on town property, they all should come here.
Read it, I mean.
I heard you read it.
Yeah, but it says pursuant to, which you don't have.
And it's pursuant to town council and town manager.
Yeah, but also past practices are basically is what it's saying, past practices. So it's all up to whoever.
Just give it to the lawyer.
I'll give it to the town attorney.
Yep.
It goes through Matt's town attorney, so he makes that call. So we'll send it.
By the way, if something happens, it's our fault, town attorney said we had to do it.
I, I, I see that the same way, but because of the, it says to established policies, and established policies are different than what they're, they're saying here, as far as I, I can see.
So, this is a question because I
I don't see any problem with them doing it, but I know, I know they must, they must have done that too with, with the Fourth of July, because I know they have their things, but they have it on the grass of the town green.
So this is a
And there's her on the street.
So this is a question.
Are on the street?
Then it's on the street.
How, how long have we had a written regulation in the zoning regulations regarding outdoor special events? Because it does say effective five-one thirteen.
When the green, when the gazebo and the green was placed, and they decided they needed it, and that was under the control of the town because people were using it for other things, and they wanted the control upstairs, and that, people didn't have to go through a lot. That's why I said it initially without reading that, that that was my understanding what it was, I hadn't read that really, to tell you the truth. But even reading it, it says established policies.
And It will go to the lawyer, it will go to the lawyer, we'll take that.
Why, why do you think that it would be a problem coming through us? There's no fee, it's just another meeting for us, really.
I don't, I mean, it's
That's, that's all right, it takes a burden off of us too if you do it.
I will send it to the lawyer, and I will find out from upstairs what, what they want to do.
All right, I mean, I'm, I'm, well, there's only four here, and there's a few people missing. Two, three, five missing, so I don't know what the full, they may have a different opinions.
Different opinions, exactly.
So
But, so if town council wants to hold an event, they come through here, right? So all events pursuant, so it's town, basically, yeah, because it looks
The town green, yes. Except, uh, according to past practices. And the past practices was the schools did what they wanted to do on their property. But if they go off to another place, so you have to get a permit for.
Right, yeah, it's, it's on
I mean, like you were talking, and we talked about last night, having a town, a garden up there in the property between Elm and, and, uh, Shaker Road. So you're saying they could go ahead and do that, and who cares?
No, no, that's not, that's not a special event, this is strictly special event.
Special event to grow vegetables, it's only a short season.
I mean, this is, this is a special event, it's, I will take it to the town attorney and we'll find out, that's all I can do, I mean.
Every week for six months?
Yeah, you could.
That's, that's when they hold it, it's like six months, May through October, even November.
That's a good piece of property up there, you have the circus.
So I will have the town attorney read it. That's, I mean, that's, yeah, that'll put, that'll put it
But I don't know why, as a second part, why people would want to avoid coming here, because I, I don't see anybody would be against it anyway. But that's why, I don't know why to end up
There's no animosity, I just, I'm just reading it, and so are you, and we'll get the town attorney to read it too. Absolutely, we will, we'll get an answer.
People have to come in here for applications when they want to hold stuff on their property, like the square, that's their property. Why can't they do what they want to do?
So I will, I will take it, I will take it to the town attorney, and we will find out.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Anything else?
No, that's fine.
Anything else?
What else was discussed, by the way, down there?
Last night?
Yeah, last night, there were other announcements.
We have some, there's some really good ideas about improving upon our, our application guide, adding some more checkboxes, like the aquifer protection and the wetlands and there's some good ideas, I think, that came out of that in terms of, um, furthering the effort to coordinate all of the commissions and making sure that everyone, you know, all the commissions are aware, if a, if a project has has to go to multiple commissions, that there's a way of making sure that we are all on the same page, that, and those file numbers stay together.
There was a few, a few, last night's meeting, there was, I don't think there was a commission not there. Even the, uh, historic district, uh, attorney to Tuan was there. And, uh, every, every chairman was there, and a couple of members with different ones were there. That was a good meeting.
It was very productive.
One more thing, what constitutes a special event?
Anything.
Oh, dear, man.
It's a whim, well, that's a special event.
Well, it's a, we actually think should have a definition. Give me a sec, I'll see if we've got a definition in here. This is what we do all day, is read these and
No, I know, but you
Make sure that we're reading them right, and that's, and that's why we're here, that's why we ask.
You just, you know, you give people a chance, just having a public hearing and, and moving in what you're doing down there because you're going to be disrupting people's lives would be worth coming here, but, and then we end up with
I understand. So we do have an event, we do have a definition for outdoor special events. Shows, displays, festivals, promotional activities, carnivals, and other events held outdoors for a limited duration, as set forth in the section with the specifics. And one are located on private property in any zoning district and are open to the public, so that's one part of the definition. So it has to be, it says private property and open to the public. Number two, located on private property in a residential zone, uh, which property is occupied by a special permit use. Number three, are located on residential property or on property in a residential district and have one or more tents with a total combined area greater than three hundred and fifty square feet.
There you go, what, what kind of an area are you in?
That says on residential property.
Yeah, but in a residential property, just
On residential property.
Yeah, but I think the last part, didn't you say in? The residential area?
Or in a residential district.
Yeah.
Well, that's Thompsonville mixed use, so
What kind of a
Their residence is there.
District are you? As I just said, you're going to be disrupting an awful lot of lives.
I understand, absolutely. So we will
Without a public hearing, and you're just going down there and slapping something on those people?
We will, I will work with them, I will talk
Never mind that, it's not even good public relations with the people down there.
We will talk with everyone, we will get those, we will get it all drawn up, don't worry.
I don't care.
I appreciate you, we will make it happen. And then there are some more specifics on this, so I mean, this is something that we've been talking about a little bit upstairs about, you know, that three hundred and fifty square feet one, if someone was holding a wedding in their backyard and they had a very large tent, that could easily exceed the three hundred and fifty square feet. So that might be something that, you know, we may need to think about.
You don't want, you know, it's like sometimes when you take a test, you think too much into it, and you get the answer wrong because you've done too heavy a thinking. I had kids at school, they would outthink the test, and flunk it because they put too much into it.
Okay, a special event is like one or two days, this is every week from May through November.
That's right.
So I will talk to them about coming.
That's more than a special event.
I'll talk to them about coming, it's not, I mean, they're still in the development stage, definitely, we'll talk to them.
Absolutely. Because not only that, no matter where he puts it, and he's got a lot of plans, you, you're going to disrupt the people that live in the, uh, Bigelow.
Right, so the thing is, is it's, I mean, the thing that might come back from the town attorney is yes, a lot of these things have to be publicized and shared and signed off with everybody, but the question is, is it in the commission's jurisdiction, and that's what he's going to look at as
If you feel you got to go there, that's where you go, but practicality says if you want to deal with the people in town, you really
Right, and
Should go through normal procedures.
So we'll, we'll look and we'll see and we'll
Yeah, do what you want.
Consistency in specifics will be, how the town, I mean, that's how attorneys have to read it, is what is the specifics. So, but we'll get it all through.
But you better show them both ends of it, it's in the residential area.
Yes, absolutely.
And you're closing the street.
And you're closing streets.
Absolutely.
It's all right, I mean, they, they do that in that area for Fourth of July, but that's only once a year.
And we will, I mean, it's all going to be presented, and it's all going to be public information, and it's all going to be out there. Absolutely, we want that to be
Well, are you going, they're going to hold a public hearing? Whoever's doing it.
I mean, it's
You said it's going to be out there, but people don't read the paper.
Well, why does it have to be, I'm not sure why I want the justification.
People's lives one day a week for a couple of months.
Couple, like six?
Well, I
The whole growing season.
Five anyways.
That's all right.
So, well, I mean, it's going to be reviewed by traffic safety, it's going to be reviewed by all the folks, so
Why not come here?
Well, that's, I mean, the question is, is it in your jurisdiction as the commission to decide that, or is that something that falls outside of the commission's jurisdiction?
Yes.
We're a land use board.
We're, yeah, yeah.
That's a land use.
So I will send it to the town attorney, and we will review the text.
Even when a town comes in and, and changes roads, or does widening a roads, they're supposed to come in here, sometimes they don't.
For operation in the right of way?
Oh, yeah, because you're changing sidewalks, and you're changing various things, and they're all on maps, on graphs. You know, everything's on file, used to be legal.
I will send it up, and we'll figure it out.
Tree belts and all that.
Huh?
Tree belts and all that.
Tree belts and all that, that's right.
Do you have anything else?
That's all I've got.
Did you want to make a motion?
Have you ready?
Yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Well, all in favor of the, uh...
So, Charles Durren?
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard, Peter Falk, four, Ron Gregory.
Four, two, three.
Okay, unanimous.
Unanimous.